Mr. City Manager, welcome. And the first item on the agenda is the Iris update. I'll let you frame that and you can proceed, please.
Would be glad to. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you and the members of the council. Next week at your May 19 meeting, staff is going to have an extension of our public transit contract on the agenda. In advance of that, and as we previously discussed, we wanted to give the council another update on how public transit operations are going, particularly with our Iris service. So tonight, I'm going to begin by introducing our Community Development Director, Tom Skinnell, to advance our conversation.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. As Zach mentioned, my name is Tom Skinnell. I'm the Community Development Director. Tonight with me, I have Terry O'Toole with Ztrip. He will give the first part of the presentation this evening, talking about Iris. And then I will give the second half of the presentation, and then we'll open it up for any questions that the council may have. So with that, I will turn it over to Terry.
Evening, Council and Mayor. Thank you again for letting me come and talk about Iris program. I was here a couple of months ago. We, at this point, have been running the program in Independence for about four and a half months, I believe. And a lot of this stuff, I'll go through, and it is, a lot of it's data that you've seen before, but it's updated to show that the service levels are still continuing, and sort of the goal of the project is happening like you had hoped for, I know your staff had hoped for, and we had hoped for. So reminding you, the launch date was January 2nd. Hours, of course, are six to six, six days a week. And they can, people, residents can book a trip through the app, through the phone, and anything, the web portal. So the fare, basically, is $5 a person unless they go to a free stop transfer point. And you're going to see a little later in the presentation that there's multiple people who have taken advantage of that, to utilize it as a low-cost service within the city. So this slide right here shows that since its inception, we've had almost 7,000 riders. The date on this, because of when this had to be presented for public, was, of course, April 19th, so it's a little bit dated, but it's about a month dated. So we've had 7,000 people. We're doing about 93 people a day. And the average shared ride is 37%. So that's telling you that anytime someone's in the car, 37% of the time, there's two or more people in the car that's helping you spread your costs. Can we look at a slide like this last time? The current passengers per vehicle hour is almost 2.0. It's a little shy of that. The industry average is 1.5 to 2.0. So we're really at the high end of what the expectation is for a microtransit program in this community. It helps that it's a, some of those, when you get into the lower averages, they're in larger communities with more square miles to coverage. So that would be something, and if you get out to the East Coast, say, in New Jersey or something, that number's going to be a lot higher. But that's a very good number for where we are in this size of community. You'll see the on-time performance, basically, you know, sort of, it stayed in this 90% range, and that is what we expect it to be at. You've got the 92% on the pickup and 92% on the drop-off. So we're happy with that number, and we have not heard a lot from the residents, because I think that's the expectation that people have. So this is what we were talking about, the free locations to include. So if you go to this location, or if you've come from this location, you're going to be able to negate the $5 charge. And that is because the city has chose these things like the Center Point Medical Center as vital to residents to be able to get to, and don't want to put a financial burden to get there. And some of the other ones, like the transfer centers, are to allow people to utilize the equivalent public-private transport to get to a bus that they can basically utilize into Kansas City and such. So this has been something that your staff really looked at hard, debated, and I think they've come up with a great compromise that allows people to successfully utilize a program and not have a cost burden if that's what they need to do. Drop-off locations, same deal. This sort of shows the top drop-off locations. And again, it's the similar ones than to what we saw on the other slide. We're still averaging about 37 new users a week, and the total unique users since we've started has been 543. So that's how many people, citizens of Independence, have utilized the system, and it continues to grow, as you can see by the slide. These are just some of the comments that we've seen. Your staff has availability to read any of the comments that come across, but these are some of the ones that are indicative of what we're seeing. And the average ride rating at 4.778, that's on a five scale, so that's telling you that people, when they grade it, are grading it at a high rank. So I think I'm going to pass this over to Tom, and we'll come back for questions.
So I want to recap. Why did the city transition from the fixed route system to Iris? And the main reason is cost. As this slide shows, for a 60% reduction in fixed route service, we were going to need an additional $3.3 million in the first year, and that jumps to $5.4 million in fiscal year 2930. If we were to continue the same service that we had before the transition, so that was over 16,000 annual hours by our fixed route, that cost of that service was over a $4.4 million increase to the budget in the first year by fiscal year 2930. That increased to over $6.6 million. So the big reason why we transitioned was cost. A little bit of updates. So again, Iris covers the entire city limits. So that is the 78 square miles that the city has within its city. We created an Iris website. It has all sorts of information there on how to schedule a trip, phone numbers, email addresses. It also has the map where all of the virtual stops are located. And we have over 775 unique stops in the city. In the fixed route, we had under 250 stops. Again, Terry had mentioned the utilization of the free transit hubs. A little over 59% of the trips utilize the free transit hubs. So within a short period of time, our residents and riders have figured out their way to use the system at a cost-efficient and cost-effective method. From the last presentation a couple of months ago, there was a question into what was typical, why someone was a no-show. A lot of times, it was, users had booked multiple rides. They had booked a ride before they were ready. The passenger was not in the correct spot. Passenger thought it was going to be a longer wait time, things like that. And as Terry had mentioned at our presentation from a couple of months ago, a lot of times the Iris driver was there waiting and was looking, and unfortunately, had to move on. Going forward, as the city manager had mentioned, we do have a one-year contract extension that the council will consider at its May 19 meeting. This contract will have the same level of service that we currently operate. So it's, again, six days a week, 12 hours each day, five vehicles, same free transit hubs, same fare otherwise. Also, we will continue to monitor the transit situations that's going on in KC Mo, as there are adjustments made there. The good thing is, we have the flexibility, working with Terry's group, that we can make adjustments as we see fit. And we'll continue to watch what's going on in other nearby communities as well in regards to transit, and again, make any adjustments as we see fit. That concludes the presentation, and we're available for any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions for you. One is a clarification. You, you know, we really struggled through the financial implications of the increase in service that, or increase in cost of service that First Transit brought us, from increasing their cost of the gas, replacing their vehicles, insurance costs, and staffing were the four big ones that they projected, just to be able to keep a reduced rate of transit across the city. And I just want people to be sure that they recognize that that's an annual cost increase.
Correct.
So it would be something that we would pay every year, and the budget just could not sustain that year-over-year cost increase that would continue for time.
That is correct, yes. That is above what we, what the city had budgeted.
Okay. Do we have any sense of whether, I don't know that we would have any input, because it's Kansas City Area Transit Authority determines the bus routes, but the 24 and the 28 are the two that serve our area. Do we anticipate that those will continue to come all the way out here? Because I know they're facing steep shortages, they're looking at reduction of routes. Have we heard anything about that?
So the 24 route, that route was to remain as is, even under the potential KC Mo cuts from a couple of weeks ago. The 28 route, I believe, was one of those routes that was going to be affected by those KC Mo cuts.
And we just think it's going to decrease the frequency, or we don't think it's going to be there at all?
The 28, I believe, I think, was going to be eliminated. Again, this is going off of what I had read and seen in the news, but our 24 route was largely untouched.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Any else other questions? Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was looking at last year's budget book, and thank you for the hot-off-the-press budget book here. And I don't want to get too deep into the weeds from Mr. Walker's presentation earlier, so just my quick review here. I mean, so we're talking about the numbers, and we're trying to do the best we can as a city to be able to provide the best services we can for the folks that live here. So we're going to add $350,000 on top of what we are spending this year, which is $1.3 million. So the new total will be $1.6 million. So we're adding to, not taking away from, and that's just to keep the level of service that we have here going.
Correct, yes.
So we're not detracting anything, but we're just trying to keep the services as best as we possibly can.
That's correct.
Okay. So we're approaching, you know, over $1.5 million. So we are doing the best we can to provide the service we can. That was just my quick take that I was wanting to demonstrate.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other questions?
Mr. Skinnell, just, I guess, you know, we knew that it was going to take some time for people to get acclimated, and what the report tonight shows us exactly is exactly that. People have become acclimated, they've become more used to the new system and how it works and the process and all of that, and they are utilizing it. So, I mean, I think it's, my sense of it is, is that it's operating pretty much as expected for the most part. And we're meeting, you know, a 92% on-time rate and things of that nature, that's, you know, I think reasonably good, you know, in those 90 percentile ranges. So I guess, you know, my observation is, and my, you know, response is, is kudos to all those involved, you know, given, you know, taking a difficult situation and making the best we could out of it. And so while, you know, I know it wasn't what we wanted, the service we wanted to provide, I think we are providing a service, and it's being utilized, and I just want to say I appreciate the report and the work that's gone into it.
Thank you for that. And a couple of things to point out. Yeah, the on-time performance is good. It's also great to have the data there. And as Terry had presented, we have 543 unique users who are using that on a regular basis, and that is data that we did not have before. So it's exciting to see both the increased usage of the free transit hubs. I think a couple of months ago, I presented it, it was 52% of the rides were utilizing that. It has now grown to just shy of 60%. So that's pretty good over a couple of months, plus just having the data there for who's using it, where they're going, that type of information.
Please proceed.
Mr. Skinnell, I am right in understanding that other smaller cities around Kansas City are having this issue, have had this issue that relied on Kansas City Transit, is that right?
Correct. There were, as we presented a couple of months ago, there are four or five other communities that, within the last year or so, had already gone through and made the difficult decision to eliminate their fixed route. And we took the option to transition from the fixed route to Iris, so that we could still serve our population with what our budget could afford.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Other further questions?
This might be a question for Mr. O'Toole. And the question was earlier regarding Iris on the one-minute window when people pull up. And I know that's also a challenge for you with the software, when you made the presentation the last time. So could you expand upon that? What's been the experience? Any challenges? And I know your ridership numbers are very good, but people who miss the ride, do they get a survey response, and do they get an opportunity to give their feedback when they miss a ride?
Yeah, let me start with that very last question. Yes, they could immediately respond that they had an issue, and we could investigate and find out what happened. One other thing that sort of has, that happens is, the more people get used to the program, when we were here, two months into the program, it was all new, and people didn't really quite, you know, there used to be, you know, in pair of transportation and such, which this feels like more on some, because it's individual, it, people would think they could be a couple of minutes late. This is more of an addition to a fixed route service, so it'd be like if you were not at the bus stop at that time. So they wait one minute, and they do move on. But I can tell you that we've watched that number, and it's not near what it was in those first two months. And it also caused us to go back and look at some other cities and see that, that as much as anything, that's people getting used to a new system and a new feel for it.
Very good. That's the only question I have. Unless anyone else has any questions?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I have one.
Sure.
Thank you. This is for the city manager. The funding that we're receiving for our transportation is 100% out of our general fund?
We do have an allocation of federal transportation dollars that help supplement that comes through the Regional Transit Authority. But predominantly, yes, it's being supported.
Probably 90% general fund? If you were to take it.
That's a good number, Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
So if we're picking up 1.6-plus million dollars, 90% of that is out of the general fund, you're going to hear a presentation here this evening where there are stressors coming to our budget and decisions that have to be made. I'm proud that we're still working and doing the best that we can with the funding that we have. There may be some times in years where we have to look at this a little bit more difficult, in a difficult manner, but right now, I think we're holding our own, and I think we're really doing good as a council. I just wanted to get that across.
Sure. No, thank you. Anyone else? Please proceed.
Thank you. One of the concerns that was brought up was that sometimes people didn't recognize the car as an Iris car, and I don't know if you guys have, like, wrapped them, but I've seen several of them, as I just go about my business, easily identifiable as Iris. They really stand out. It's clear that that is the vehicle you're supposed to be getting in. So I appreciate you hearing our concerns earlier and getting that taken care of.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Other further questions? Excuse me, ma'am. And, Mr. City Manager, anything else on the Iris program?
No, sir. That concludes that presentation.
All right. The next one is proposed budget for the 25-26 proposal. And, Mr. City Manager, please proceed.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Zach Walker, the city manager, and this evening, I am pleased to present to you the proposed budget for the city's fiscal year beginning July 1, 2025, in accordance with Section 8.2 of the city charter. Before I begin the budget presentation this evening, I would be remiss if I didn't thank the many people who have made this presentation possible this evening. First, I'd like to thank you, the mayor and the council, for delivering me and my staff with a focused strategic agenda that lays out priorities. I'd like to thank the citizens who completed our annual budget survey and provided additional context. I'd certainly love to thank my leadership team and all of our city staff who've spent countless hours preparing thoughtful proposals and worked hard to bring the budget into balance under a highly resource-restricted environment. Finally, I'd like to thank the incredible budget team comprised of Director of Finance, Melissa Cabrera, Budget Manager Alex Morgan, our Budget Analyst, Malia Finch, and jacks of all trade from other city departments, Laura Edgar and Crystal Jeffries, who volunteered their time to help supplement our efforts. This group has sacrificed countless nights, weekends, and working hours to bring our budget picture into focus, and their ingenuity and innovation has helped us navigate this resource-restricted environment to bring forth the budget proposal that you will see here this evening and that builds the community that we all expect. The proposed budget this year totals $449,784,680, or an increase of roughly 9% over fiscal year 24-25. The budget growth this year is driven primarily by capital improvements in combination with increased personnel and operating expenditures. Our personnel expenses have increased by a total of 6% across all funds due to our previously negotiated wage increases with our public employee bargaining units, as well as a 3.25% cost-of-living adjustment for nonrepresented employees to keep up with inflation and encourage employee retention. Our operating expenses have increased by a total of 4% due to factors such as inflation, increased insurance costs, and accounting for other internal service expenses like technology, cybersecurity, et cetera. Our equipment expenses across all funds are down about 10%. So before I move on and begin discussing fiscal year 25-26, I'd be remiss if I didn't reflect on some of the very notable achievements that resulted from the budget that you adopted last year. There'd be far too many to list here tonight, but a few that I think merit consideration and acclamation include: The general fund is now satisfying the minimum reserve balance of 16% for the first time. We have received validation from the credit rating agency Standard &amp; Poor Global as part of a recent credit rating review that our financial policies and practices are moving in the right direction. We are seeing a strong resurgence in economic development. In the last year, we saw a $111 million increase in building permit valuations, speaking to not just the quantity, but the quality of development we are seeing. We brought forth and received voter approval for a city charter amendment that ensures independence will never go more than seven years without a city charter review. We had a historic general obligation bond vote. Voters approved $55 million for street, bridge, and sidewalk repairs, and we are proceeding with implementation of strategic plans and priorities to support and operate Independence' power and life in the manner becoming of that enterprise. To leverage these historic achievements, the city must maintain its commitment to establishing long-term fiscal stability. The submitted budget for fiscal year 25-26 is framed by economic realities and strategic vision. It continues to build on the corrective actions taken in the previous fiscal year and further stabilizes service and operations following years of delay and deferral. This budget also takes a further step toward correcting the longstanding structural imbalance that impacts city operations. The 24-27 Independence Strategic Agenda sets six strategic purposes for our organization. This document, a living document, has provided much-needed focus for our organization as we seek to align council expectations with available resources. As we began, as we didn't, pardon me, as we did in fiscal year 24-25, we will continue to utilize the council's action plan to ensure our budget is aligned with critical community needs. Our community members rightfully expect superior delivery of the basic services provided only by the city of Independence. In the face of flat revenue growth and an increase in the cost of doing business, meeting these expectations continues to require a realignment of dollars. While we are always looking for ways to reduce our expenses, simply cutting programs is not the answer. Even simply eliminating low-priority programs may not be the answer. We must look at the whole picture and think beyond what's been done before. As I developed this year's budget, I was met with the following challenges and objectives. In accordance with state statute, we had to present a balanced budget, which meant addressing a shortfall of $6.3 million in the general fund, simply to sustain our current service levels, including, as you just heard, an additional $350,000 to maintain our current public transportation services. We had to identify funding to include critical new spending requests presented by my leadership team. I wanted to provide a 3.25% across-the-board wage increase for our nonrepresented employees. This represents the largest recommended across-the-board increase during my tenure as your city manager, and is reflective of our need to remain competitive in a tight labor market. As of March 2025, the Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers in the Midwest region increased by 2.7% over the last 12 months. This indicates a moderate rise in the overall cost of living in the region during that period. In comparison, the national CPI rose by 2.4% over the same timeframe. We wanted, and of course, were required, to fund the collectively bargained wage increases with each of our seven public employee bargaining units. We wanted to build on our previous progress while keeping in mind external economic volatility. We wanted to shift our organizational focus from a reactive to a proactive approach to community building and public safety. We also had to account for the loss of federal funds supporting a number of programs, notably Independence Together. Fiscal year 24-25 represented the final year of American Rescue Plan revenues supporting this and other services, which for Independence Together represented $100,000. And just as a reminder to those watching, as a result of this program, over 1 million pounds of litter have been removed from the community, and more than a dozen community members have found permanent housing. In 2024, the Missouri Municipal League recognized this program with their Innovation Awards for both the Metro City category as well as the Member Choice Award. City category as well as the Member Choice Award. So total revenues for the general fund in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget are eighty-four million, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, which is a year-over-year decrease of two percent from the twenty-four, twenty-five budgeted revenues and a point one percent increase from fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four actuals. The increase over fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is primarily due to increased revenue from charges for services as growth in tax receipts is minimal. Total expenditures for the general fund are eighty-five million, one hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars, with no additional funds anticipated to be added to our current reserve balance. This represents an increase of one point six percent from our twenty-three, twenty-four forecasted expenditures and is a six point seven percent increase compared to the adopted budget. This increase is primarily driven by increases in overtime and other pays. This fiscal year, we will be examining what and when positions can be filled based on budgetary trends. A resource-restricted environment means we must be strategic on when vacant positions can be filled. Now, as I previously mentioned, this past year, the general fund satisfied the minimum reserve balance for the very first time. Ten years ago, the city had an unrestricted fund balance of just four point seven percent. We have come so far, and this achievement reflects our commitment to fiscal responsibility and being good financial stewards of the community's money. While we're celebrating, we still face a difficult outlook ahead. The way our budget has been structured prior to the budget you're receiving tonight, we were projected to be negative by twelve point four million dollars by fiscal year twenty-seven, twenty-eight. The same problem persists from previous years, expenditures that outpace revenue growth. This is driven by a multitude of factors, some of which, like inflation and potential price increases due to tariffs, are out of our control and being faced by every municipality across this country. Additionally, the daily cost of doing business continues to increase between the cost of materials and supplies, market adjustments, and contractual personnel increases, as well as increased funding just to maintain services at their current levels for things like public transit. Since fiscal year two thousand and seven, two thousand and eight, our police and fire departments have grown from comprising fifty-two percent of our general fund budget to now seventy-four percent of our general fund budget. The costs for these departments are rising at a rate that we simply cannot keep up with. Every other department in the general fund has seen a decrease in the percent of general fund resources they receive. Each year, we do just enough to present a balanced budget, but this has come at the expense of minimal wage increases, cutting positions, laying off staff, reducing or eliminating services. This initial shift that I will be describing to you tonight puts us on a trajectory to start managing that growth better while preserving basic services that are delivered by other city departments. To counteract this problem, a cornerstone of the submitted budget is a strategic reallocation of public safety costs. Specifically, we are shifting the fire and police department budgets out of the general fund and into the fire safety sales tax and Proposition PD funds respectively. Rather than being directly supported by the general fund to help maintain their operations, these departments will now receive a transfer from the general fund. These structural changes do not reduce the city's investment in public safety. Instead, it ensures that some of the structural pressures on the general fund are alleviated, helping to stabilize all city services and protecting future general fund balance. The chart on this screen shows the projected general fund balance with this shift in place. As you can see, the outlook is much more positive than the previous projection. We are also creating a more sustainable funding model for two of our largest departments that benefits the entire city. The costs for these departments are rising at a rate that we simply cannot keep up with, and this initial shift puts us on a trajectory to start managing that growth in a more responsible manner. Utilizing this approach, the general fund deficit went from six point three million to just about two hundred and eight thousand dollars. If this innovative approach is rejected, then my staff and I will need to identify six point three million dollars in savings from just twenty-three million dollars in non-public safety spending or a twenty-seven percent reduction in general fund appropriations. So to balance that remaining two hundred and eight thousand dollar deficit, I have recommended the following reductions: A thirteen hundred dollar reduction in travel for the city clerk's office, fourteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollar reduction in parks facility maintenance, a fifty thousand dollar reduction through a position reclassification in my office, sixty thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight dollars of savings from administrative reductions in municipal services, and eighty-two thousand dollar reductions through operating efficiencies that have been identified in the municipal court. The balanced budget includes the following new spending requests: Three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to maintain our current transportation levels, fifty thousand dollars for additional funding for code enforcement, and sixty thousand dollars to contribute towards Independence Together after the aforementioned loss of federal funds. We are also recommending ten thousand dollars for enhanced customer service training for city staff who interact directly with the public in our municipal facilities, reinforcing our commitment to excellent service and community engagement and empowering our staff with the skills they need to successfully serve in a dynamic environment. So I want to speak more about this notion of proactive public safety. This goes beyond the police and fire departments to address root causes and community-wide challenges, including the formation of a new Department of Community and Emergency Services to better coordinate public-facing services that require rapid, organized response, and effective communication. This department will serve as the central hub for the city's emergency management operations, ensuring a coordinated and strategic response to natural disasters, public safety incidents, and other emergencies. It will also serve as the city's communications division, strengthening citywide messaging and public information efforts to keep more residents informed both during routine and emergency situations. Additionally, the department will develop and manage a citywide volunteer program to mobilize community support during key events such as storm debris cleanup or snow removal from residential properties for those unable to do so, which enhances our resilience and fosters civic engagement. By consolidating these interrelated functions, the department will improve responsiveness, streamline communication, and increase the city's capacity to serve residents in times of need. An additional function of this new department will be addressing the complex challenges of homelessness through a more strategic and coordinated approach. To lead this effort, a new homeless outreach coordinator position has been established within the department. Funded by revenues from the marijuana sales tax, this role will serve as a critical liaison between the city and its large network of nonprofit service providers. The coordinator will help align resources, eliminate duplication of efforts, and improve outcomes for individuals and families experiencing homelessness. In addition to strengthening outreach, this position will focus on preserving existing housing options and identifying opportunities to expand access to stable, supportive housing. This investment reflects our commitment to addressing homelessness through a collaborative approach that leverages local partnerships and targeted funding. As part of our renewed emphasis on proactive public safety and neighborhood stabilization, four hundred thousand dollars sourced from the marijuana sales tax will be directed to the dangerous buildings program. This substantial investment will significantly expand the city's capacity to identify, secure, and remove blighted and hazardous structures that pose safety risks to residents, first responders, and surrounding properties. Addressing dangerous buildings is not only a matter of physical safety, it also plays a critical role in crime prevention, fire mitigation, and overall community well-being. This funding will allow for faster response times, more comprehensive inspections, and greater coordination with code enforcement and neighborhood services to ensure that deteriorating properties do not become long-term threats. This initiative reinforces our commitment to proactive, visible actions that make neighborhoods safer, healthier, and more resilient. Finally, the budget recommends an additional twenty-five thousand dollars to support the annual dues, testing, and repairs to the city's severe weather alert system. These actions reflect a community-wide approach. For example, in a notable success, our police department's response times to the Clarion Hotel, a site of frequent calls, have significantly dropped after community development revoked its business license. This demonstrates the effectiveness of cross-departmental collaboration in reducing strain on emergency services. Increased funding for dangerous building demolition should also help reduce call volumes for our fire department, who, in one example this past year, were required to respond to a structural fire at the same residence on multiple occasions due to arson. The city of Independence administers seven additional voter-approved sales taxes. Like all city funds, these continue to experience pressures from increasing costs to support their intended use against limited revenue growth. New to the presentation this year is the Proposition PD Sales Tax Fund. Highlights in our sales tax funds include the fire public safety sales tax, where one hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars has been budgeted for the replacement of seventeen LifePak monitors and defibrillators. The current equipment utilized by the department has reached the end of useful life, and just for clarity, this appropriation represents year one of seven for this purchase. Two point eight million dollars is appropriated in debt service obligations for the public safety bonds to construct fire stations five, eight, and eleven. The public safety sales tax fund has a one point two million dollars for capital outlay, including three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for replacement of vehicles, mobile data terminals, in-car radios, handheld radios, and purchase of StarChase systems for more vehicles. The street improvement sales tax fund has capital maintenance improvements totaling about nineteen million dollars, of which nine point six million is supported by the street improvement sales tax fund, and nine point nine million is eligible for grant reimbursement. Notable projects include four point six million for pavement preventative maintenance, one point five million for the Winter Road Complete Streets project, a million dollars for Twenty-third Street Safety and Mobility improvements, as well as three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Twenty-third Street Complete Streets program. The stormwater sales tax has two point four million for capital maintenance and improvements, including nine hundred thousand dollars for the Bunshu Regional Detention Basin, four hundred seventy thousand for the Ellison Way Drainage Improvement Project, and one hundred thousand dollars for the Forty Highway and Pittman Drainage Improvement Project. The marijuana sales tax, as previously mentioned, four hundred thousand dollars towards dangerous building removal, and eighty thousand dollars for the new homeless services coordinator to be housed in the new Department of Community and Emergency Services. There is also the one hundred thousand dollars for the cold case reward program as required by city council resolution. Prop PD sales tax changes to that. Funding is being utilized to support officers' salaries, as approved by voters last August, as well as the, now being where the general fund transfer will be housed. So this chart looks different than in previous years because, as I've mentioned, fire and the police department are now housed within their special revenue funds. You see that reflected here in the significant increases across personnel categories. Capital expenditures are increasing due to various planned projects. Our enterprise funds are up in expenditures overall, largely due to planned increases in capital spending and for equipment. And I want to stress, this is something that has been planned and anticipated for some time and is a strategic move to accelerate our capital maintenance and repair programs in our three utility funds. The submitted budget does not forecast significant revenue growth in the enterprise funds, which is a result of, again, limited economic expansion, flat consumer consumption, and fixed utility rates. But there are highlights that are worth mentioning, including in the municipal services department, a three hundred and ten thousand dollar increase for the sewer fund due to a mandatory rate increase adopted by the Little Blue Valley Sewer District, forty-five thousand dollars for the purchase of six new well-flow meters at the Courtney Bend Treatment Plant, and, most importantly, thirty-three million dollars in capital improvements, including five point five million in sewer projects and slightly more than nine million dollars in water projects. For power and light, notable capital projects include a million dollars for Substation R, three million dollars towards the construction of a new Substation S, and two million dollars to demolish the Blue Valley Power Plant chimney. In accordance with the recently presented IPL strategic plan, several personnel additions are being made, including a journeyman, power plant mechanic, electronics technician, finance analyst, engineer one, and training and outage coordinator. Capital expenditures in our internal service fund include major upcoming software and hardware purchases, including a new data center. Technology Services has worked to spread out the charges to these departments to lessen the budgetary impact on the departments and funds when these items occur, and I thank them for their thoughtful and strategic approach. There are little more than four million dollars in capital expenditures for technology services, including two point five million dollars for the data center replacement and six hundred and thirty thousand dollars for checkpoint security tools. There's also nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Arctic Wolf Security Operations Center. What is that, you ask? Well, it's a critical component of the cybersecurity platform that guards our organization and our sensitive data. It functions as a centralized facility that's staffed twenty-four, seven by security experts who monitor, detect, investigate, and respond to cybersecurity threats on behalf of their clients like the city of Independence. In the use tax, we are projecting about three percent growth and foresee moderate increases of about two percent for both the police and animal shelter. With regard to health insurance, we have made no changes to the structure of the split between the employer and employee. That's a really important recruitment and retention tool for us. There are also no changes proposed to our retiree health insurance program. Inflation is a key factor for our employees, and so while we have a market adjustment for our nonrepresented employees this year, inflation still has an impact on their household budget as seen by the approximately nine percent premium increase for health insurance. However, I do want to point out this graph, which shows that while healthcare plan renewal costs have fluctuated somewhat over the last four years, overall, they have remained relatively stable and predictable, averaging about nine percent increase for this year. That is slightly below what we forecasted and is a significant testimony to our collective work to better manage our healthcare costs as an organization. So, this fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget, it remains a tool of accountability and vision. It reflects the city's strategic priorities and responds to the evolving needs of our residents. Despite the financial constraints, we've preserved key services, made meaningful organizational reforms, and directed resources to where they will have the greatest long-term impact. The year ahead, no doubt, will demand continued creativity, adaptability, and unity, but the city has had many hard conversations and taken equally hard steps each of the last eight years to bolster our fiscal health. While more work remains to be done, I am confident, based on our past results, that we can and will do this. Deliberate and thoughtful dialogue must continue to be had about what programs and services our community values most. A budget is, after all, a statement of values. While the proposed budget is balanced as required by state law, I must reiterate to you that there is no built-in capacity for expansion. As such, any enhancements during your budgetary deliberations will require corresponding reductions in expenditures as an offset. I want to thank you, the city council, and all of our city departments for the assistance that you have provided in preparing this budget. I also want to again thank all of our city staff for what they do for our community each and every day. They do- They do so with the utmost professionalism and commitment in a highly challenging environment. I do recognize that the options presented as part of this budget are not easy choices, but I feel strongly that they represent a proactive and fiscally responsible path forward. Please know that my staff and I are ready to address any questions regarding the information presented. You'll hear from each of the city departments over the two nights of May 27th and 28th. The public budget hearing and first reading of the budget will occur on June 2nd, and the second reading and vote on operating capital budgets will occur at the June 16th meeting. With that, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Please proceed.
You know, I have several.
Yes.
Let me just start with some clarifying items so that I make sure that I reflect well your very detailed presentation. So for the person listening at home, I'm sure they took a look at that 400 and change and said, "Dear God, that's how much money it costs to run a city." For them to realize the water department is in there that you pay your water bill for, the sewer department is in there that you pay your sewer bill for, your electricity is in there, so that global budget includes all of your utilities, which are separately paid and have to maintain their own costs. Fair?
It is fair. If I may add one thing to that, so while nearly $450 million, as you're saying, council member, many of those funds are highly restricted to the use for where they come from, so $450 million is a lot of money. The amount that's available for discretionary or flexible spending is highly restricted.
Very good. So that restricted money is called our general fund, and that's the $84 million that has to serve as basically our bank account to do everything we need to outside of dedicated sales taxes that are pigeonholed and statutorily decreed where those go.
That is correct.
Okay. So my reflections on this are that our income is not going down, but it is flat, so it isn't growing, and yet on our expense side, just like in my household, I am seeing my expenses grow because of inflation, increased gas costs, et cetera. And in there, we also have some obligations to pay our employees. We kind of think of our employees in two buckets. We have the group who are represented by unions and the ones that are not represented. And in our reflections today, when we were doing some budgetary preparation, it has not been uncommon for those non-represented employees to have 0% or 1% increases, so this actually giving them a 3.25% increase is a marker of the value that they bring to our city, and I appreciate that they are getting treated better. We shouldn't ask them to subsidize the city by taking no raises, even though their home expenses are going up, so I appreciate that piece in the budget. You talked about ARPA funds as being funds that we have received in the past and that we have spent to shore up our budget in certain places. It's easy for people to be like, "Well, you just passed the buck. You used those until you had to make hard decisions." But having watched this budgetary process, I have seen deliberate movement to use those ARPA funds very strategically to shore us up to a better financial position so that we can make sensible, long-term choices. Am I reflecting your experience?
You're absolutely right. These dollars were spent, as they were intended by Congress when enacted into law, primarily for revenue replacement from the highly disruptive and volatile economy that followed the COVID-19 pandemic.
Okay, so we use those to buy us some time so that we make better fiscal choices, because nobody makes great fiscal choices when it's a catastrophe.
That's correct. It gave us time to be thoughtful.
I have spoken before about how much I appreciate us having a fund balance. This is like a rainy day fund that every household should have, because you don't know when you're going to blow a tire. Same thing with the city. You don't know if you're going to have a measles outbreak or a COVID outbreak, and that's going to change who comes to your city or how they spend money. And we've certainly seen fluctuations in the market for how money comes in as people change their purchasing habits, so having us have a little cushion is very wise. I want to reinforce what you said about CIP funds. So these are our dollars that we are using for infrastructure projects, and so storm and streets and IPL, they save up their dollars and put those until they have saved enough to be able to do what are sometimes very large purchases or very disruptive projects. Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay. So I don't want people to look at those numbers and be like, "Well, here's all this extra money." I mean, this is money that we have set aside to do the things so that when you flush your toilet, good things happen to you and not bad things, and so that we are replacing our water cleaning systems and we are replacing our transmission and distribution systems. I know I was with Director Hegendorfer today, and he's talking about needing to replace some 50-year-old transformers, and he is waiting five years for those to come, but he gets to pay for the gift now and wait for them to appear in five years. So there's a lot of moving pieces when you're doing these CIP projects. I am very pleased that we're investing more in dangerous buildings. You know, our fire are going out for arson or for homeless people trying to stay warm who are burning buildings down, and they just invite a lot of bad behavior, so removing those makes everybody's job easier. On the Independence Together line item, there's money that comes from the stormwater sales tax, and it seems to me that any trash that is not going into the stormwater system makes their job on the other end easier. They don't have to fish all that stuff out before they process the stormwater. Is that why it's coming in at that tax?
It is. So kind of inside baseball here, but the city actually gets a permit from the state. It's called an MS4 permit. It permits us to put stormwater into a drain that eventually then drains to a stream. There are certain actions and activities we have to take every year to show that we are doing our level best to keep minimal amounts of, you know, water substances going into those storm drains and to those creeks where they drain to. So it's our thinking that if roadside litter is removed, the next time a gully washer comes through and carries that debris, it won't go into the inlet and into the storm, which helps us with our relationship with the state, maintain our permits, et cetera.
You know, cybersecurity is another one of those things nobody thinks about until their electric grid falls apart or until somebody hacks into the police database. It's one of those expenses that 10 years ago, nobody was spending on, and so now we have bigger and bigger costs for those, which means that has to come from somewhere in the budget. I'm sure those were not easy choices, but really important, and it's one of the things that the council put as one of their strategic objectives, was that we invested very carefully in cybersecurity to be able to protect these really important assets. So thank you for that. The biggest one on here is, of course, this budgetary option of taking the percentage of the budget that has been dedicated to public safety and giving them more control over how that allocated amount is spent. So my understanding is it doesn't change the percentage of the money that they get. So fire is still getting 30.6% of the entire general revenue budget. IPD is getting 42.5% of that general revenue budget in addition to dedicated sales taxes, and then within those budgets, we'll have to make the rank-order choices of how those dollars are spent. Is that a fair assessment?
Precisely right.
Okay. So over time, we would expect that the percentage they would get would stay relatively stable?
That is our proposal moving forward, is that percent amount stays fixed or relatively flat, but of course, the actual dollar amount will increase commensurate with revenue growth in the general fund.
Okay. So we are working hard to increase our tax base by working with North Point and bringing in additional businesses and those kinds of additions to our infrastructure to generate additional taxes. So as those taxes begin to generate the income we are thinking will come, then those budgets will increase in the dollar amount, but not in the percentage of a bigger pie.
Absolutely right.
Okay. Fantastic. And nothing inside of this budget precludes the fire budget or the police budget from getting additional grants. Those would still be able to come in and be allocated to them when they write for grants. It won't decrease the percentage of the general fund they would get.
No, that's, again, those amounts are fixed, and I would also point out that as the Use Tax continues to operate, police and fire sales tax funds will receive their proportional share once the two requirements for the police department and animal shelter are satisfied, so they'll presumably see additional revenue growth from an increased waterfall of the Use Tax as well.
Thank you for answering my questions. Thank you, Mr.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Mr. Mayor.
Please proceed.
Thank you. So you talked about revenue isn't down, it's flat. The term is limited economic expansion.
Right.
So is the City of Independence an outlier? Is this something that only we're facing?
No, this is, every municipality across the country that I'm aware of are facing the economic realities. We'll be very volatile marketplace right now, very unpredictable, exceptional increase in prices for goods, services, commodities, et cetera. And I will even tell you, one place I'm seeing that transpire, as municipalities are seeing budgetary restrictions, they're making tough choices about what they can spend their limited dollars on. I think, you know, as I mentioned, you know, training and memberships are something that are important, but we're sacrificing those in the name of our other city services. An organization I'm a member of, the International City Managers Association, has recently laid off 10 of their employees, which is about 10% of their workforce, and again, that is because of the less-than-forecasted revenues that they're receiving from their members across the country. So it's playing out not just in the municipalities themselves, but these member organizations that support local government as well.
And then, this budget process is quite a complicated process, and it starts much earlier in the year. Can you talk about how many people are involved, from the departments to the financial department?
Yeah, I'll tell you, more than I even have direct contact with. So I predominantly work with the deputy and assistant city manager, the deputy or the director of finance, and the budget manager and budget analyst, and then each of the department directors, of which there's about a dozen of those. Within those departments, though, there are some wildly talented fiscal administrators, other support staff, there are, you know, division managers, et cetera, who are all putting together their budgets for their respective units. So I would say well beyond 100 employees are involved in this process annually to help pull this together.
Thank you.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Can you just clarify for me, the $50,000 for code enforcement?
Yes.
What is that for?
Yeah, so this would be in addition to the amount that the previous budget had allocated. This would be for everything from paying an abatement contractor to mow tall grass and weeds, to paying an abatement contractor to haul off, you know, junk. I think we technically call it open storage, junk. Inoperable vehicles that need to be removed from a property, so anything that is in violation of the city's property maintenance code and where we don't get voluntary compliance from a property owner and we have to hire a contractor to abate the nuisance, this is additional funding for that.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Please proceed.
Mr. Walker, appreciate the level of detail here. I'm going to have to go back and probably listen to your presentation again because there was a lot of detail in there, and as you might guess, I'll have lots of questions as we...
I remember your budget binder from last year. I didn't know Office Depot had that many tabs.
Right. I do have a couple of questions that I think I want to raise at this point. If you go back to the slide that said expenditures and special revenue funds, if you could do that for me, I just want to make sure I'm seeing this and reading this right. Yeah, that's the right one. So, you know, we're increasing these, these are being increased substantially. Can you just help me make sure I'm reading this correctly in terms of, you know, we got 327% increase in salaries and benefits, 2,162% increase in retiree health? I don't really understand that one mostly. That's the question I probably mostly have. But then, if you could just kind of speak to this slide so that I make sure, as I'm looking at things, I understand it.
So this slide is showing all of the sales tax funds in the city. This is aggregating those then by expense category, salary and benefits, as you said, retiree insurance, operating expenses and equipment, and then their capital portions if they have them. The reason these amounts are increasing in salary and benefits and retiree insurance are not necessarily because those costs are increasing, you know, they are not going up 327% or 2,100%. It's because of that transfer from the general fund for police and fire, so the 42% of the general fund being transferred and slightly more than 32%, 30% for fire being transferred. So that's predominantly what's hitting that salary line, and then it has been our practice at the city that the city's obligation or cost associated with retiree health insurance is booked into the department and fund where an employee retired from, so that's why you're seeing this, is that would be those portions for our retired men and women in the police and fire departments.
Okay, that's what I thought.
But again, I do want to clarify, retiree health insurance and police and fire is not 2,100% of the budget.
I knew that was the case.
That's the dollar amount increase because of that transfer over.
That's what I thought. I just wanted to make sure I was reading that all correctly, and so. The other thing I think I want to ask at this point is, you know, I guess I want to make sure, and you may want to refer to Mr. Covert on this, that this proposal, this moving funds, you know, the general fund into the separate funds and kind of housing, if you will, housing those departments in those special funds, that that is in line with the voter-approved sales taxes that are presented in this particular page? With that, I want to make sure I'm real clear on that.
Pardon me. So there's a couple of different funds being impacted here. Let's start with Proposition PD. That was approved, as I mentioned, last August. Of course, that raised the sales tax by a quarter cent to be spent on police officer salary costs to help us remain competitive with what was unfolding in the region at that time. The only restriction there is listed in the ordinance that called for the election and mentioned that we couldn't go below, using that tax could not go below the current amount of general fund allocation for the police department, which informs that roughly 42% amount that we've been speaking about. The marijuana sales tax, and I apologize, I don't have that language in front of me, but again, it's not the ballot language, but in the ordinance that called for the election and spelled out the ballot language, mentioned that, you know, marijuana being legalized was going to create some additional administrative duties for the city, and as a result of that, we were asking voters to approve the sales tax for things like administrative expenses, neighborhood cleanup, I'm paraphrasing a little bit here, public safety. So we were very careful to make sure, and that's why, you know, I was very intentional about the language they used with these dangerous building funds, for example, of, you know, we're not just going to go tear down an ugly, dangerous building in a neighborhood. It needs to really have been a property that has had a significant public safety impact, whether it's one that's been subject to arson or the police department has had repeated calls to that property. Something about that is creating... Something about that is creating a drain on public safety services. With the fire sales tax expansion that happened in 2021, 50% of those funds have to be spent on equipment and 50% have to be spent on what was defined as new police or fire personnel. And so we're in compliance with that, with the dollar amounts that we've shifted around here. Alex, is there any other fund that I failed to? Oh, I will say with the use tax, you know, of course, that was originally enabled to support the animal shelter and 30 new police personnel. We went back to the voters to be allowed to use those funds, not just on those 30 officers, but all of our police personnel and the equipment needed to help them do their jobs. So as far, we've tried to be very thoughtful and make sure that we're not running afoul of what was defined in those ordinances when those elections were called for. And I know I emailed that to those ordinances to the council today. And if anybody does need a copy of those, we'll be happy to provide those as well to make that research easier on you.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to hold off until I really get a chance to dig in with other questions.
Perfect.
But I just wanted to start with those two.
That's great. Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Anyone else have other further questions?
Don't.
Please proceed.
I don't mind going last.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, it's my list.
I just want to be sure to come back and clarify this issue on police. So we've, we've set aside 42.5% of the general fund and for that, in addition to their sales taxes. But this year, that actually represents more money than they received in last year's budget in actual dollars. Is that true?
That's correct. So even though, you know, when we say budget's flat, it doesn't mean literally, but revenue growth is nominal. But there is revenue growth. So because of that growth, the amount that represents 42.5% is more than the budget that they had last year. So they have more dollars to work with this year than they had this previous fiscal year.
And by how much?
Could you help me with that, Alex?
I don't have the exact amount, but it's roughly about $2 million more.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentations, Zach. Very well done. And thank you to the staff for helping put that together and some of the sidebar conversations that we've had about leading up to this point. Can you talk just a little bit about, again, about the external pressures that we're seeing, minus the fire and the police situation? What are the other external pressures that we're looking at?
Well, I don't know if anybody went to buy chocolates or flowers for your mom this past weekend, but those costs were up significantly because we live in a global economy. And my statement here is purely nonpolitical. It's an observation on current market dynamics, but the tariffs that are being imposed both by the United States and on the United States from foreign nations are driving cost increases in our budget. So when municipal services is doing the annual street overlay program, the cost of asphalt, oil, gas, all of those costs have gone up. To buy any kind of operating equipment, frankly, in any of our departments, it costs more this year than it did last year. That's usually the case, but it's the exponential increase as a result of these tariffs that are hurting us. The word inflation is being thrown around a lot right now, and there's significant fears of a recession lurking around the corner, which that tends to mean people slow their spending. That's the definition of a recession. So as people are choosing to spend less of their disposable income, that means we are realizing less and less sales tax gain than we might in a typical year. Specifically to the state of Missouri, again, it's just an observation, nothing more, but over the last several years, the General Assembly has enacted legislation that has reduced some of the more traditional and stable revenue sources to the city. So for example, the cable franchise fee has been walked down from 5% to 2.5%, a 50% reduction. The mayor has long championed, and many of you have supported, the municipal court reform where we've no longer able to suspend a driver's license for failure to appear. That's played out in the courtroom because if people know there's not a consequence for paying their traffic ticket or appearing in municipal court, they're not paying that at the compliance rate that they used to. So change in state and federal legislation has impacted revenue. Tariffs have driven costs upward, and fears around inflation and a looming recession have slowed consumer spending, which means less revenue to the city.
Sounds about right. Well, that kind of leads into maybe a little bit of the new position that we were looking at regarding the community emergency service department. Is that something that, once that's fully stood up, that we can go to the COC for funding to help offset our budgetary need?
That would be my hope, that we can demonstrate that we have a functioning, fully-staffed, operational department that is focused on that, and then begin to pursue funding opportunities that we've previously not been eligible for, or maybe haven't received the funds at the level, I should say, that we have in the past because of the services and approach that we're now taking.
If we set this up like you outlined, I mean, there's some strong possibilities, and I would defer to a little bit to Councilwoman McCandless on her knowledge of that, that maybe we could probably squeeze some of, squeeze ain't the right word, but ask for some of that allocation for, to help offset, not this year, obviously, but for the years to come. You mentioned the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. I was taking notes and stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
Can you explain to me what that was, what I just caught?
Yeah, so there are a consortium of municipalities in Eastern Jackson County that are, together constitute the Little Blue Valley Sewer District. So a lot of our western portion of our city is serviced by Rock Creek Treatment Plant that's operated by the city, but most of our eastern part of the city, your wastewater flows to this Little Blue Valley Sewer District. That board, just because, you know, operating costs, we've been talking about this all night, have increased. So that board enacted a rate increase to, you know, ensure appropriate revenue to provide their services, treatment of wastewater, et cetera. And as a result, those costs are passed on to the participating municipalities. So as a result of that rate increase, we need additional funds to pay our new amount to be a member and participant in the Little Blue Valley Sewer District.
What is that number?
The new, the new amount, $300,000.
Okay. And that'll be passed on to them?
Right now, that cost is absorbed by the city. So as a, as a member of that, we, we pass, that cost is absorbed by us, passed on to us by the sewer district itself.
Okay. But Mr. Mayor, if you don't mind, with that, are you on the board of the Little Blue Valley Sewer District?
I am.
Do you know what the reasoning was for that?
The same thing that we've been talking about for the entire evening. Their incurring costs, they're seeing increases, they've had to go and actually increase, make improvements to their facilities, and that was the reasoning. So on that board, it's a number of mayors from all of the, I don't believe Kansas City participates in it, but it's almost all of the surrounding, you know, half-moon shape around Kansas City that are those mayors that participate in it.
Precisely.
And they all, you know, begrudgingly say, we did it. But you're absolutely right. It's not, not a fun discussion, but it's the discussion you have to have.
I figured it was about the same.
Part of me.
Same problems that we were having.
Bingo. Absolutely right.
Well, there's going to be plenty of information to digest and conversate on, as you were saying. Just a couple, it's always the same thing, at least for me, and I will throw Councilwoman Vaught in the mix too, because we represent the west side of town. Not that other council districts don't have the same stress and/or pressures, but we have a lot of areas where we have to redevelop and kind of think outside of the box to bring life back into some of the buildings and structures and neighborhoods and infrastructure there. So kudos to city staff and the city council for helping move that vision forward. The important thing to realize, if we're going, if we're going to build, we have to reinvest. And the citizens did choose to do that, was the passage of question, too. So a big thank you again for them. But as we're moving forward, at least on the first district side, working in Fairmont to bring the Old Town Fairmont revitalization up and going, the capital improvements there. That gives us an opportunity to help reimagine what that could be there. Inglewood, they are doing well. The Friends of Inglewood Theater, they are moving and tried to acquire the theater. All of this type of discussions and actions, and I'll even put in feasibility study to help reinvest into our community, will pay in dividends. The Square, working to redevelop it with our master developer, with enhancements that are taking place here. All these are just little steps that we can see dividends in the long run. We've even reached out to several folks in the Maywood area. This is one area where there's going to be a good infusion of infrastructure dollars taking place at the corner of Truman and Winter that we can possibly, hopefully, help catalyze, use that as a catalyst to move the progress up. Truman Road to help redevelop some of the old Maywood buildings in that area. It's how we can do this. Some people think it's money not well spent doing some certain sort of activities, feasibility studies, capital improvements, cost shares. But in the long run, it does make a difference. And that's one of the things that we can do as a council and as we work in our districts, particularly on the west side of town. We've got, we've got quite a bit of work over there, Councilwoman Vaught. So the work that she has done with trying to clean up a lot of the hotels on 40 Highway, Nolan Road, I mean, it's all part of it. So with that, I'll refrain until our one-on-ones and other conversations that we have during our study sessions.
We look forward to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other discussions? Well, I just want to thank the staff for a great job. I know this is a ton of amount of work. It takes hours and hours and hours to get here and appreciate this. Obviously, we've got to adjust it and work on it and go from there. But thank you all for your efforts. Unless there's any other discussions, Mr. City Manager, anything to wrap up finally on the, on the evening before we adjourn?
Nothing tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Well, with that, we will call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.